Shelter Board Member Bobby Little.
Here to discuss the issues the shelter is having now, what we need to do to correct it, who we need to get to correct it. I guess we'll just throw it out there for Joy. You had some good ideas and insight, and you've been living up there the last week anyways. Thank you for that.
So as a shelter board member, I, you know, visited the shelter in the spring to help Lindsay, gave my recommendations. They seemed to be being followed. The last visit that I had up until Saturday was in June. When I went up there on Saturday, I saw that things were not being done as they should have been done. Preventative care was not being done. Animals were getting sick. Sanitation was not proper. And so I talked to the girls that were working there at the time. They have been since following my recommendations. We've been doing the proper protocols. We've been doing everything. They have followed every recommendation that I have made, and it has made a huge difference. But to me, that tells me that there does need to be more of a direct veterinary involvement in the animal shelter operations. I have spoken with all of the veterinarians in Madison, every clinic, and in Carroll County, and they are all willing to do, help, they're all willing to, sorry. They're all willing to set up availability for shelter appointments each day. They're willing to set a schedule to have veterinary walkthroughs once a week so that we know that the protocols are in place and being followed to make sure that the animals are being well taken care of up there. In order to do that, however, all of them have made the recommendation that the organizational structure of the Animal Shelter Board and Commissioners be changed. We all realize that there is confusion to who has oversight at the shelter, I think, for us and for the public especially. The role of the board as it currently stands is very confusing, and my proposal is that the shelter board as it stands be eliminated. There should be a point person, the director, that reports directly to the Commissioners, and there should be a veterinary oversight board, which is made up of multiple veterinarians, that will run point on what needs to be done from a medical aspect, from a veterinary aspect. We have discussions with the Commissioners and with the shelter director, but that's what is going to take to get the veterinarians and the community involved. All of the veterinarians that have been involved in the shelter in the past have faced harassment. I myself am dealing with it right now because I'm trying to help.
We appreciate you so much, Joy.
But I think that if we do this, we can have a real positive change for the animal shelter, for the animals involved, and we can make sure that they're taken care of properly, and we can get community involved then again, and we can garner the respect of the other veterinarians. Everyone is willing to help. There just needs to be an organization change. So that's my recommendation.
I did speak with Mayor Courtney, and he also is in agreement that there needs to be structural change as far as oversight, and he's willing to sit down and talk ideas and look for a better solution, too.
Yes, and he's here, Ray, just so you know.
Okay.
I too agree that the change in the way the oversight's done, and I like the suggestion of the director answering directly with the Commissioners, but I think a major component of that is to be certain that this place of the oversight of the veterinarian board that would be overseeing that is in place. I think that would be very important, and I think that would be a very positive step forward. You know, I have had numerous discussions in the past with Commissioners and have met once with Mayor Courtney recommending that there needed to be changes because our current interlocal really doesn't address what the authorities or what the advisory board's supposed to be doing. All it basically says is we're to pick the operator for the shelter, and when that changed from being an outside operator to an employee, we still continued on and were asked to interview candidates for Jenny's position and this position. But going forward, I am hearing that this would be a good solution. I haven't discussed the details with the Humane Society Board as such, but I think they as well would be in favor of a veterinarian board that's going to provide the oversight.
I agree with Joy as well. I think we need the vets there. Joy has taken on probably 99.9% of the animals that need care at the shelter, and it should not all fall on her. And if it takes changing the structure of the board to get more vets involved, then we need to do it because at the end of the day, these animals need vet care. That is what matters, is the animals. So we need to move forward with this.
One area, though, I see is somewhat two separate things. I see the oversight board of the veterinarians being involved and so forth. I don't know that that necessarily means that the same veterinarians would be involved in the everyday oversight or the care or actually providing services. If there's, I think there's going to need to be some type of request for services, put together what they would want from a veterinarian and providing, because it's too much to expect these veterinarians to provide these services just because they're on this oversight board. And then there also, though, needs to be some oversight on where pricing and so forth falls in the line on what the county is going to pay for various services. So once it was determined what it may be that all the vets would participate, it may be only one, it could be that none of the vets would participate directly in that. Am I?
So multiple vets, not everyone would participate in the oversight board. As I have, I've talked with them, some are not able to have that scheduled, but multiple vets from different veterinary clinics are willing to participate in the board. And we're in the early stages because this meeting was very quickly scheduled, but we have had some discussions about setting a pricing structure for spays and neuters so that it's equivalent across the board, so that there isn't this guessing game, or so that people don't have to make the decision based on cost involved as far as where they're going to send their animal for like the spay and neuter portion of it. You know, we all have different overhead costs. We all have different costs involved with treatment, and so those types of things would be something that is set at an individual level, what they can offer the county. But it is something that we have discussed that we can make sure gets done properly in the best interest of the county and the vets.
I think it'd be good for you and the vets you've talked to to meet with us, and we could run through that, because they would have ideas, visions, and issues that we would not know. And that way, it's all out transparent on the table, so it's not, oh, we didn't talk about that. Yeah, that's been covered, so.
We can put together this request for services kind of document so they can go and get proposals back and so, and some guidelines at least. We'll have to you to get the list of things that would be included, and obviously, there's going to be some things that you don't think about, but I guess we could just.
Very good proposal. Appreciate your heart.
Do you need any type of motion on the proposal? Are the Commissioners going to pursue that? How do, what's the next step in moving that forward? I assume it would fall to Commissioners to be putting together the steps of an interlocal along with the City of Madison, Town of Hanover to accomplish that?
I think we'll probably, to, I guess we can make a motion that we're going to look into that. I guess we have to wait and see what the discussions with the City of Madison and Town of Hanover, what that end looks like, but yeah, I think, so I mean, we, is it going to be a new one, or do we just say update the?
I think you're going to need, might as well start with a brand new interlocal.
Yeah, I was thinking sometimes you get those things in there.
No update.
Older one hasn't been touched since 2007.
Sure. Okay, so that says it's not one.
It's outdated.
Sure. So I'm making a proposal that we come up with a new interlocal agreement, including this direct veterinary oversight board with the shelter, and I'll also come up with a document on requests for services that we can send out as well.
Any more questions or comments?
Well, the only thing that the veterinarians that you're speaking to for this oversight board need to be aware of, and they might have some reservations if they don't realize this is such, the oversight board that's established by them, yes, they would be able to meet with the Commissioners in executive session to discuss personnel issues that they've seen or evaluation, that type of thing, but their meetings as such, when they meet and so forth, would need to be public meetings as such. And there's been times that when there's been talk about it, there are some individuals that are more than willing to serve on a given oversight board until they find out it has to be public, and then there's some reservations. And so I didn't know if they were aware of that or not.
I'm aware.
Thank you. So we'll include that in, in the, in the.
Yeah, the animal shelter, in order to buy supplies, in order to have vaccines, in order to have any veterinary contacts with distributors, you have to have a veterinarian either willing to put their license, which no one is willing to do that right now at the shelter, or you have to have a veterinarian that's willing to supply those things to them. And that's what I've been trying to do, is supply vaccines, because no one is willing right now to put their license with the animal shelter. So, but you have to have a veterinarian involved in order to have those things, like their sanitation, their disinfectives, their, all of those things have to come from veterinary channels.
Did you want to bring up about the interim director since we are?
Well, we need, we got a vote on the table, yeah.
Oh, we got a vote on the table, hang on. We had a second. Motion.
Ready? Any more questions or comments?
There we go.
Not all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So as long as those changes are made, and the director of the animal shelter is going to report directly to the Commissioner and the current shelter board as it stands will be dissolved, then I have a recommendation for Tricia Parker to be the interim director of the shelter. I spoke with her yesterday, and she will accept it if we make that offer to her.
Is that a motion?
Uh, yes.
Second motion.
Am I doing this one, too?
Sure.
That would be the board, right?
Yes, the board's making this recommendation. So you're serving two, two spots today.
Come on, Ray, get in here.
All in favor?
I have a great deal of confidence in Trish. She had the shelter in the past, was very, very, did a very good job, and would be very supportive of that.
All those in favor, Ray? Ready, Ray?
All those in favor?
Aye.
So are you going to contact her? Hopefully, she's available Monday?
She won't be available, she won't be available Monday. And so until then, what I will do is I've already spoken to both of the animal control officers. They're willing to go up there on a daily basis to make sure that the current recommendations that I've put in place starting Saturday are being followed, that protocols are getting done, that preventative care is getting done. Until Trish can be there, they're going to make sure that those things are being maintained.
And I have also been up there and am willing to continue to go out there after work every single day, and I'm going for the six, and helping with the paperwork, the sort of just those, making sure donations are going where they belong, making sure we're using them how they should be used, and help them with that oversight, and I'm checking to make sure they're following Joy's protocols, and if I have concerns, she gets texts and Candace give texts for me. So I've been up there, and I invite you all to come as well and see that that staff is really working their hearts out for the animals.
Did you say when she hits the?
No, not yet. But she said it wouldn't be very long.
The saving grace is when she hits the ground, she'll be running.
Yes, she already, she would, she left before they implemented Pet Point.
She did so much.
But, so she has to be updated on Pet Point, but she knows all of the other, everything else that needs to be done. She did it.
And Pet Point is being used religiously up there. I'm not sure the Commissioners are aware of what it is, but it's the record-keeping. So, yeah, so every single animal's getting that kennel card. They're getting, if they go to vet, there's a medical note put in. Those sort of protocols are in place. I check that every single day when I go up there. I make sure.
And they're on approval. Lindsay showed me how to get on there.
They probably get annoyed by me being like, okay, did you do this yet? So I'm just making sure they're doing everything Joy said to do, and I told them not to disappoint Joy.
Good news is the fence is being installed. We're going to get a concrete pole for the shelter runs.
Oh, awesome.
Camera system was approved, and the door reader has been approved, and the cat room.
And I have good news, too. I forgot. Last time the board met, we thought we were like in a crisis situation with budget, and I met with Heather Huff because some of the money was just kind of like not put in the right accounts, and it turns out we're not in the crisis situation that we thought we were with funding. And so I thought we weren't going to be able to pay our vet bills that are outstanding because we found out some of the vet bills are really outstanding, and today she confirmed that, no, we have the funds to do so. So I haven't updated, I didn't make copies, I'm sorry, I just threw it in my purse. But I do have this, if anyone wants a copy, I don't know if there's a copy machine in here, I can make one, or I can send it to anyone. But our current fund balance is much larger than the last meeting, which was two weeks ago. So, and that was good news, because I was worried.
Well, there were credit card receipts that had came in that weren't getting appropriated where they were supposed to be and so forth. The dollars were there, but they had not been put into the correct accounts.
So really Heather Huff needs a shout out for having to go through all of this and get it sorted out, yes.
She's done excellent. I spoke to her because I had looked at the, there's one account there that was a very low balance, and it would be the account that normally all the adoption fees, reclaim fees, and so forth be going in. And I brought it to her attention that it was low, and she immediately saw that as well and discovered that what had happened, the fees had been going into what's called one of the donation accounts instead of that one. And that's when we talked about at the last meeting as to whether there was a need to move all of those, and I think she went ahead and went back and corrected that. So that'll be helpful. The only other thing I had mentioned, you brought up the, the concrete as such on the shelter runs, and I had spoke the need of that in the past, which I appreciate. But one thing that I think needs to at least be taken into consideration, because we have that problem on our existing runs, when the decision was made for the concrete, there was not any thought given to how do you keep it clean? What do you do with the animal waste when you wash it off of there? So as brought up at the shelter, last shelter board meeting, there's been a problem on the existing ones that's washed back behind the kennels. And so it's not a very good approach to be able to go in and just have to shovel it up and put it in a bucket, but that's about the only thing you're going to be able to do unless you're putting in some type of catch drainage or something that when you wash off the slab, that waste material has a place to go.
We could do that and take it down over the hill behind it.
Well, it needs to go in the sewer. You couldn't just take it over the hill, but...
Unfortunately, not a sewer, right?
Okay. I don't know where, how deep the sewer is back there.
We could put a line pit right behind it.
That, a line pit might be a solution. I don't know enough about those particular things, but, but it would, it needs something that catches that. And you're, if you can get it into the city sewer, that's the best bet. You're already paying the...
I don't know if we'd be allowed to.
You're, well, I would think you probably will. Everything that's inside goes into it. All the kennel runs inside go into sewage drain.
I don't think that it does.
We'll have to look into that. Yeah, we'll look into that.
Okay. I didn't realize that. I was under the impression that it went into the sewage.
My first thought would be like a line pit right behind it so it has a place to go because it will be broken up as they, you know, spray it off anyways.
I think you'll find it goes into the sewage. I've not seen any evidence when I've been on the property that we have some place that all this waste material from those indoor runs is accumulating at the end of the pipe. Have you seen that? Does it exist that there's a pipe dumping somewhere on the back of the property that's just dumping?
There is certainly a pipe that goes over there, and I followed it up and went down over into the wooded area. I don't know.
If that's happening, that's going to have to be addressed. That's not acceptable, but I, I don't think it is. But, and the other, my point where I was going on it, you're going to be hosing these off and so forth. You're already paying the sewer bill on the water bill, so if you can put it into the sewer, if there's a way, that would be the best way to address it. The only thing you're going to have to do is have some type of cover or something that would go on so when it rains, we don't have rainwater going into the sewer. The city wouldn't like that very well.
Stormwater.
Stormwater, yeah.
Back to you, Ray.
Commissioner meeting, I thought.
Joy.
Have I got anything else?
Open it up to the public?
Your call.
Yep.
Public comment? Time's up.
Be quick.
I had a question. Sorry. I'm Julie Patterson. I've messaged with a bunch of you guys about some different things. I was wondering if Joy could maybe explain the veterinarian board a little bit, and my question basically is would that be something where people who, like me, who are doing TNR, other rescue type stuff in the community would bring concerns or ideas, or would that be just going to the Commissioners then? Can you just explain a little bit more about what that board would do?
So basically, we would just be in charge of the medical oversight of the shelter, making sure that protocols are being followed, making sure that things are being done as they should. There are some national organizations that have put out standards for shelters, and, you know, as veterinarians, we, you know, we have a unique ability because of our training and practice and expertise to know what it needs to be done. And so with the national organization standards and with our ability, we would be able to make sure that the things are being done as they should. So with you for your TNR programs and things, that would be something that you would work with the shelter or the Commissioner for. We're just there to make sure that everything's going as it should.
I appreciate you putting all the effort in. It sounds like you've been doing a lot of legwork this last week, so I really appreciate that, and I just appreciate you as my vet. So I wanted to put that out there.
Another question. Of course, as part of that shelter standard that I've looked at in the past, accurate records is a part of that, correct? And so you would be overseeing as well that Prutha rabies vaccinations and adoption farms and all of those things are being kept up on a monthly basis at the shelter?
Yeah.
That would be good.
Yeah, and that's one thing that we've already implemented. They, the vaccinations that were being done at the shelter were not being entered into Pet Point, which is their records system, and that has been updated, and they are now doing that.
Saw another hand right there.
I have a question. Adam King, how do we know that this isn't going to slide in three months? I mean, she's putting great work into this. She's putting her heart into it. Everybody's working hard right now, but how do we, what kind of guarantee are we going to have that it's not going to slide?
I can answer that, too, because we're going to get involvement from the community veterinarians, and it's not going to be just left to one person.
Could we hire a experienced vet tech that would, could be hired on there to communicate with you all, that has three years or more experience, that could red flag right away and talk to you guys?
Yeah, I think ultimately, you know, I spoke to, I have a list. I spoke to veterinarians that work for the Salem City Animal Shelter, the Jennings County Animal Shelter, Bartholomew County, Jackson County, White River. Four of the five have RBTs on staff, and so I do think that ultimately, that would be really beneficial in the long run, yes.
And also, what kind of program are they setting up for volunteers again, so that volunteers can go in and start helping again?
Yeah, I think that that's something that, a bridge that we have to cross once the new interim director is in place.
And one other thing. I got a few here. And the budget to be able to handle it. You know, I've seen the budget. It needs to be dramatically increased. You know, I mean, with COVID and everything, everything has gone up 25 to 50%, and it's grossly underbudgeted. And to have the adequate staff that needs to be there. Instead of kids, needs to have some adults in there that have knowledge, and it needs, I won't say the number, you all know the number. I know what the number is. I've already gone through it all. But supplies, food, everything has gone up. Gas for the car, double. So it's all something that needs to be looked at. I know there's money out there. There's got to be.
Yeah, it's not adequately funded.
That tech be, basically, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday, I mean?
I mean, the ones that are at the other shelters, the ones that are at the other shelters are the directors. They're RBT, but they're also a director.
I got one more. I'm on a roll here, sorry. And what about open hours for the shelter? Are they going to be able to open more than, what is it, 14 hours a week?
I know that they recently started opening on Wednesdays all day, like from noon on. So that's an additional day from prior.
Good.
It's a conversation that I had with Jessica and asked her if I'm on another day. She got Wednesday opened. And, you know, there's a staffing issue up there.
Right, right. And that's, that's why I said if we're, you know, able to increase certain things, you're going to have the right people in there.
And it's, and they're all part-time with like nine to two schedules, so that has been readjusted as much as we can, but we have to get people who have the availability to work full-time. But when you're making what you're making, you can't make ends meet at the shelter, so.
It's gross.
They were able, and I did want to say they had two girls working on Wednesday, and that is it, and they were able to clean the facility and have the doors open to the public. So I was proud to see that.
Good.
While you're working on all your other items and your vet advisory board or oversight board, any chance at all you could add the local sheriff and police chief so that you can address animal control issues simultaneously? I agree that the Commissioners don't have any oversight of those, the city police chief that's appointed by the mayor, and you don't have any oversight of the sheriff. That's a duly elected position. But some collaboration and perhaps even public accountability of having, having those two persons present to address some of the issues that have been brought before the shelter board that they are entirely helpless to address, might be an added bonus while you're restructuring to, to see if you can get that commitment from those folks, training to talk with the mayor, and of course, the sheriff's office. Because shelters aren't going to function without collaboration with animal control.
The animal control officers are all respected by the veterinarians and have worked hand in hand in animals that have come in on emergency situations, and so I think that that's something that we would be able to discuss with them as well. that we would be able to discuss with them as well.
Must have been Adam more than me.
Maybe I answered everybody's question.
You threw me off. Oh, I got one more. You knew it was coming. The covers for the outside kennels, because I know we mentioned it in the other meeting on Wednesday and somebody had said that maybe it was already okayed. Ray? Maybe? Because I know on Wednesday's meeting, when I brought it up, he said he thought it was okayed already.
Your audio is cutting in and out a little bit, but if, we're not sure whether that was appropriated or not, but if it was, it was last year and that money had already been come back, so we'll have to look and see if we can find money to do the.
There may, there may be some, there may be some money. The shelter had sent out sponsorship letters a while ago, I'm trying to help them organize this, but one of them was a kennel sponsorship where people would support the kennels, outdoor kennels. And so we need a, we're tracking down the letter that was sent out, it was sent out by a staff member who's no longer there, but if that letter allows for us to use that money for those sort of things, we may be able to go out and address that.
Because I know everybody that sent back their letters that check mark what they were sponsoring.
Yes, so I'm trying to find the letter to make sure the money's being used for what it was intended to be used for.
And I know winter's coming, I was a little worried without the covers and we're full, right?
It's all accounted for, all the money's accounted for. Heather Huff has it in just one fund and I actually spoke with her before coming over here about breaking that out, so I have to get these a little more organized for them and then we're tracking down that letter and as soon as we have that letter, we'll be able to know what that money can actually be used for.
Are we able to get those thank you letters out filed?
I'm working on that as well because they've been waiting since August, so I'm also working on that with the, with the staff up there and a banner as they had promised to do, so.
I think that's it. Oh, come on. Give me a minute.
Mr. Mayor, sir?
No, I really don't have anything to add except that I really like the direction we're heading and we'll collaborate however the City of Madison needs to with commissioners and the board and I, Dr. Barry, thank you so much because I believe leading the shelter with veterinarian-led expertise will be very impactful and game-changing for the shelter and the animals there and the community.
Thanks, sir. Back to you, Ray.
Do they have anything else?
Yeah, I'd just like to give kudos to the county council, which is something they usually don't get for appropriating the funds for these projects, so thank you guys for that.
Happy to do it.
Now can we get the money for the covers?
One thing at a time. I think we can come up with another.
I really think we could probably do like these aluminum, it's like a cardboard type deal, they're quick, they're dirty, I mean, and you could probably get maybe three, four kennels at a time, so it would look cosmetically appealing to instead of putting a tarp or.
Yeah, because those tarps look horrible.
Metal or something, just scab it up, so.
Yesterday, they're torn.
Because the concrete, the kennels look so professional, let's don't mess it up. I'll check into that in the meantime, okay?
Thank you.
It's you, too. Nobody else?
Yeah? Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Second? Third?
All in favor?
All right. Thanks. Thank you all for coming.